You are good to go lives.
All right. Calling to order the Monday, January 4th, 2021, regular meeting of the 38th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here from Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here from Berkeley, Michigan.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Here from Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Henan.
Here Berkeley, Michigan.
Councilmember Price.
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here from Berkeley, Michigan. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve? So moved.
Support?
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Henan. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes that we, or to the agenda for today, sorry? Seeing none, it's a relatively straightforward agenda. All right, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Our agenda has been approved. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. With us this evening is Pastor Adam Grove.
Let's break. God, we thank you for tonight, first chance to gather to do the city's business. Lord, it's been a, it was a difficult year, but this is a new year, so we thank you for new beginnings and, and, and hope. Lord, we pray for, continue to pray for just our frontline workers and, and medical people, public safety. We just thank you for their sacrifice and just continue to pray that you would protect them and uphold them. God, we pray for relief from the continuation of this virus. We pray for all the effects of it, the anxiety, the loneliness, even online schooling and, and all the struggles that we all, parents face in that. We pray for those with employment issues. Lord, just pray that you would be in and have presence in each of these, these difficult situations. We pray for school administrators deciding what is next and, and when is best and the appropriate steps. So we just pray for wisdom, we pray for just your blessing on this city. We pray for encouragement that is needed by so many. And so again, bless this meeting, bless these council members, their families, and this great city of Berkeley. Praise in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have now come to our first public comments section of the evening. This is for comments that are included on tonight's agenda. You may present your thoughts on issues again that are included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please make sure to email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymish.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand or dial in at 1312-626-6799 and put in the meeting ID, and you will be recognized either by name or number. When you speak, please state your name and city of residence, and remember you will be limited to three minutes.
Not seeing anybody at this time.
Okay, we'll give them another second, since I did go through and say all of that, just in case anybody wants to get in here. It does appear that we are not super popular this evening. Ms. Mitchell, any emails that you've received to be read into public comments?
No, sir.
Okay, Ms. Mathis, still nobody?
No, sir.
Okay, we will close the first public comments section and we'll move on to tonight's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, manner of approving the minutes of the 38th Special City Council Meeting on December 15th, 2020, and the regular city council meeting on Monday, December 21st, 2020.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Are there any corrections? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Our consent agenda has been approved, we will now move on to tonight's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Motion number M121, motion to approve the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M0121?
So moved.
And motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, Mayor, good evening to members of council. Uh, this appointment comes to you this evening by way of the library board. Uh, the library board is one of our few boards and actually is required by ordinance to submit a recommendation to the council. And, uh, this evening, they've submitted the name of, uh, Jordan Patera, who actually is joining us this evening along with, uh, library director Matt Church. Uh, and your packet includes a memo from your library director as, uh, well as Mr. Patera's resume and credentials that he filled out to the city.
Thank you, um, first for our library director, Matt Church, I want to thank you for being with us this evening. Uh, is there anything additionally you would like to add?
No, just that we're excited to have, uh, Jordan join the library board. Um, it's always nice to bring in new perspectives and new people. Um, grateful for the number of applicants we had, but, uh, we were most excited about, uh, Jordan joining us.
Well, thank you, Matt, for, for providing your feedback and mentioning that there were, you know, other, certainly applicants. And again, something that we've mentioned the last few meetings, we, we've had a ton of residents that are looking to volunteer their time and talents to the city, and we are incredibly grateful for that. Um, at this particular appointment, we are looking at, uh, Jordan Patera, who is again with us, Jordan. Um, and I wouldn't put you on the spot, you don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but we have a very difficult decision to make here in just a few minutes. Is there any final, uh, final comments to try to sway council's opinion here?
No, I would just like to say I'm really excited about this opportunity. I enjoyed chatting with, uh, Matt and the other board members, uh, last month. Um, I'd be greatly honored if you would appoint me, and I'm excited about, um, the prospect of working with the library. Thanks.
Thank you for volunteering and for being with us, um, today in, in this forum. Councilmembers, additional questions, uh, or comments, uh, before we call roll, uh, Mr. Patera? Councilmember Price?
Yes, as our liaison to the library board, I did want to just thank all of the applicants, um, who applied for this position. We're so grateful that you're willing to volunteer, there were many qualified applicants, and, um, we hope that you will continue to be willing and continue to be eager to serve. And, uh, Jordan, just want to welcome you to the board. Um, we think that your perspective and your position and your experience will be greatly valued and a great asset to our library. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Price. Any additional questions or points of clarification? All right, seeing none, again, I want to thank you, Jordan, for volunteering and, and for being with us this evening. And here's the moment of truth for you, I know you are on pins and needles. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes, welcome aboard.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes, uh, thank you, Jordan, and, uh, welcome, we appreciate it. We now move on to item number two, uh, Ms. Mitchell?
Motion number M221, motion to consider an interlocal agreement with Oakland County to allow the city to participate in the restaurant relief program and authorize the city manager to sign on the city's behalf.
Is there a motion to approve M0221?
Motion to approve?
Or?
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, Mayor, uh, all credit on this item goes to not only the county, but also our DDA Director Jennifer Finney, who was with us this evening, as well as, uh, Community Development Director Erin Schluto, and, uh, the Berkeley Chamber, uh, staff as well, both Darlene and Roseanne, uh, who have been tirelessly canvassing our restaurants to ask what they need. Uh, you'll see from the program that the county rolled out here from your packet, uh, they have greenhouses available, propane tanks available, uh, heaters, disinfectants, and disinfectant solution, or, uh, sprayers as well. So the, what we have discussed so far is, um, actually taking delivery of a lot of propane tanks and heaters, as well as the igloos and phase one here. Uh, these are items that reflect in, reflect, reflected in the feedback that we received from our, from our businesses that say, you know, hey, I'm having a hard time, uh, getting propane, keeping propane, uh, the cost is becoming, um, is increasing, it's becoming a major part of keeping outdoor operations available. So, uh, these are all tailored specifically to help, uh, restaurants all across the county, not just Berkeley, uh, but we would like, uh, to be the beneficiary of this program as well. The county did allow us to go ahead and submit an application for phase one. Uh, pending the, uh, approval of this body, uh, we'll be able to pick up these items and get them out to our, um, to our businesses as early as potentially even tomorrow. Now, we'll have DPW actually go and pick up some of these items, and the county is hosting a logistics call, uh, tomorrow afternoon as well. So they're really trying to put, uh, fill a need, uh, and, um, we're, we're thankful that they rolled this out. It was quick, um, they were able to get the stuff out to us right away in phase one, and we're looking forward to likewise going through a similar process of phase two, where we're actually, uh, delivering these items directly to the restaurants in need. Jennifer Finney has done a fantastic job of putting together a schedule and, um, kind of maintaining this, this process from start to finish here. And so a ton of credit goes to, to her due diligence on this.
Well, thank you, Matt, and thank you, Jennifer. Um, anything, Jennifer, you'd like to, to add to what the city manager mentioned?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Matt actually summed up this program very nicely. Um, but I'll just kind of reiterate, Darlene, the executive director of the chamber, myself, we've actually been talking very closely with a lot of restaurant and bar owners over the last few weeks about this program, and many, you know, are, are in great need of either these items or of reimbursement. So this program will definitely help them survive, um, the winter months and, and COVID.
Thank you. Uh, questions from council for either, uh, Ms. Finney or for the city manager? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, I, just a question, I know this, we have some snapped together buildings, greenhouses here. Do these become the actual property of the restaurants and they get to keep them forever? Or do they belong to the city, or do we have to give them back to the county, or how does that work?
The county has it as a grant program, so we will be able to get it to the, uh, the restaurant owner, and the restaurant owner would then own it. So the city, uh, does not have the need to, to own them, and so therefore we're, once we deliver it, we're, we're out of this, so it's, uh, both their needs.
Better just to be the middleman than have to store these later on.
The, uh, the only item in that that we might end up going a little bit contrary to is specifically the disinfectant sprayer. Uh, one of the things that we've been talking about internally is the city would own that and then lend it out on a cycle that would allow several businesses to use it because there's a limit of two per city. So that's the only item on this list that we would anticipate to potentially own.
That would make sense, yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Price?
Well, thank you.
Just a comment really, I understand that the turnaround for this was really tight, so I just wanted to thank Erin and Jennifer and Darlene and Matt and everyone else who made this happen. I think this is a great benefit to a really important resource in our city, and thank you for giving them the support that they need.
Thank you. Uh, additional questions or comments? All right, seeing none, again, this is something that was put together very quickly, but is incredibly important, and we are, it, it's great that we're able to participate in this. I mean, I thank the input of Jennifer and Matt to make sure that we're able to have this, especially if it is as soon as tomorrow. I'll, I'll, I'll say this week, I don't want to, you know, put anybody under tomorrow timelines, but hopefully as soon as possible. Um, and seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M0221?
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number three, please, on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R121, manner of authorizing a resolution to amend rules for electronic meetings.
Is there a motion to approve R0121?
Motion to approve?
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, Mayor, uh, the city attorney has kept his eye on Lansing during the lame duck session, and, uh, in this, uh, these updates take our already approved rules for electronic meetings and amends, and amends it to, uh, be consistent with a, uh, bill that was passed in the legislature of the lame duck session, uh, that no longer requires us to have a locally declared state of emergency in place in order to hold electronic meetings through March 31st. That is just now, uh, something all public bodies are able to do. Um, and then, again, I count, the, the legislature has likewise committed to, uh, reassessing that deadline at a further date, um, as needed as well. So, um, it looks like it has strong bipartisan support, and so legislature is very supportive of allowing public bodies across the state to meet in this format in order to maximize our, each of our safety.
Mr. Sparren, anything you would like, uh, to add or bring to council's attention? I know we've seen the, the changes and the strike through, but anything else?
I think the city manager summed it up well, our state legislature is cooperating with us in this regard, you know, a couple of, a couple of months at a time, which is understandable. Hopefully, we won't have to go through this again, or at least not too many times. But, uh, for now, we can continue in this format, uh, through the end of March. There were a couple of other, um, more minor changes, uh, to the Open Meetings Act that are covered in these rules that, as you indicated, Mayor, the council could all see. Should we decide to have an in-person meeting before March 31st, we will be required to follow appropriate, um, uh, CDC, uh, guidelines and protocols, uh, things like that. But primarily, we're just pushing back the, uh, remote authorization, remote meeting authorization date to the end of March.
Questions from councilmembers for you, our city manager, our city attorney? And this is not anything that's, that's too surprising to us. We've, we've been following these, and every time that we get, uh, some additions, we want to make sure that they are authorized by resolution, uh, so that we are following all the guidelines. Seeing no additional questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R10, or R0121?
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Public comment?
Yeah, I'm just not used to going three lines of public comments, you assume there had to be something else in there. Okay, well, we're gonna move on along to our second public comments, uh, section of tonight's agenda. And this is for comments, uh, on items that were not included previously, those three items, um, on tonight's agenda. The same rules apply as before, and again, if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff, please email the clerk's office at clerk@berkleymish.net or call the clerk's office at 248-658-3310. If you would like to comment, uh, please raise your hand or dial in at 1312-626-6799. When you speak, please state your name and remember that you will, or name and city of residence, and remember that you will have three minutes. It's taken me longer to read both of those statements than I think anything else so far on our agenda.
See no comments at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, I guess we will move on from our second public comments, uh, section and move into communications. Ms. Mitchell, who would you like to go first?
Councilmember Baker.
Councilmember Baker.
You're up. Start low and move up from there, right? So, uh, hey, everybody, happy new year to you all. Three, uh, three, uh, quick updates, uh, from the historical committee. Um, they're continuing to work on museum displays and scanning and archiving photos and articles. Uh, there's no meeting in January that was canceled, the next meeting is scheduled for March, and so I'll keep you posted as we get closer. And, uh, holiday mugs are still available. Uh, if you haven't packed away your holiday stuff already yet this, uh, this season and want to have a last minute addition to, uh, to your collection, feel free to contact, uh, City Hall or simply send an email to museum@berkleymish.net, uh, museum@berkleymish.net, and they will help, um, coordinate a safe, um, easy way to, uh, to get you the, uh, the mugs and anything else that you might desire from our, our city's history. Um, the Technology Advisory Committee's meeting is next scheduled for February 17th at 6:30. Uh, the cyber tip of the meeting is to protect those new techno gadget gizmos that you may have gotten over the holiday gift, um, exchange. Um, a lot of things these days are smart in the sense that they want to connect to the internet, so the guidance is to please be smart about it and make sure that you're appropriately protected with passwords and that you have the firewalls in place with your routers, because folks get kind of sneaky out there. So, uh, enjoy those gadgets and, and make sure that they're working for you, not against you. Uh, the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, uh, we've heard, uh, uh, an item that they were a part of earlier in this session. Uh, their next board meeting is next week's, uh, Tuesday, January 13th, Wednesday, January 13th, uh, at 8:30 in the morning. And, uh, we'll have an update on the wayfinding project, uh, the signs are, are in the process of being installed and some good stuff like that. And, um, and hey, there's this really cool thing that's continuing called the 21 Days of Berkeley Promotion. And, uh, here's what's in it for you, right? So, uh, you can earn $20 in downtown Berkeley bucks for every $40 spent at, uh, at participating downtown businesses. It's not a bad return. So how does this work? Well, from January 4th, so today, and there might still be some shops and restaurants open, you can get out there, um, all the way through January 24th. Uh, shop or dine at the participating restaurants and, and, uh, stores and businesses throughout our city, and the complete list is on the, on the website. Then all you need to do is take a picture and send your, um, send your receipts in, uh, and your mailing address to the following email address, marketing, marketing, at downtownberkeley.com. Uh, send those by January 25th, uh, and you will receive your downtown Berkeley bucks. And then you have until the end of February to spend those bucks. So the idea is to give you incentives to come back and spend more in the city, right? So, um, so again, um, check out the website if you're not sure, but go support our Berkeley businesses. Uh, for every 40 you spend, you'll get $20, uh, in Berkeley bucks. Uh, just send, uh, pictures of your receipts to marketing@downtownberkeley.com, and then you'll get your voucher things, and then you can use those throughout the month of February to, um, to continue to enjoy all that Berkeley has to offer, and that's fine. Uh, and finally, it was Joel Osteen who once said, "The life in front of you is far more important than the life behind you." And, uh, I'm, I'm sure many of you are very thankful to say goodbye to 2020. It was, uh, it was pretty much awful in a lot of ways, uh, but at the same time, there was a lot to be thankful for, and, uh, and we do have a new road ahead of us. So, uh, I'm not big on resolutions and things like that, but it does give us pause to reflect and think about our frame of mind, especially with what we're going through here in all this, uh, business. What will you do to make 2021 great for you, right? Will you, um, will you reach out and, and get to know somebody who's very different than you are? Will you put others first and, uh, and pay it forward? Maybe call somebody that you haven't connected with in a long time? Uh, read a book that you're not sure that you would have been interested in, branch out a little bit, and our library can help you with that. And please, be sure to take care of yourself, because somebody out there loves you and cares about you. So take care of yourself and, and others around you, and let's make, uh, 2021 a fantastic year for us all. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Price?
Thank you. The holiday season brought great joy to my family and our neighbors. I especially want to thank Teresa, Dan, Joe, um, and all the rest of the Parks and Rec crew for the holiday display and the light tunnel, which made our evening walks magical. I also want to thank the small business owners who took the time to help us find the perfect personal gifts and all the restaurant workers who somehow make it carry out absolutely delicious. Thanks also to everyone keeping the little free pantries and little free libraries full. And thank you to all of the neighbors who have been plowing each other's sidewalks and shoveling each other's walks and greeting each other enthusiastically from a safe distance. Many of my friends in various corners of our city report the same phenomenon, that this year, and moving into our new year, more than ever, neighbors are reaching out and finding creative ways to support and take care of each other. Keep it up, Berkeley, we are so lucky to call this city our home. Thank you.
And you, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor, just a, a short one tonight. Uh, Oakland County COVID-19, uh, rates are trending down, as you saw the stuff that I put out earlier, they're really looking good. So I just want to tell you to keep up the good work, everything's going good and things are looking great, while continuing to support our local businesses and our local restaurants, because they need that support desperately. So Merry Christmas, I hope everybody had a great holiday, and looking forward to getting back to work this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor, um, I just have a few Parks and Recreation updates. Senior Chair Yoga begins virtually, actually, it began today. Um, so if you're interested in that, you can still get in on it, it is an ongoing, uh, opportunity. The Park Scavenger Hunt will begin, I think, within a week. Um, please go to the Parks and Rec Facebook page for more details on that. They don't have an exact date, but it's, it's supposed to begin within the week. And then remember to check out the Tunnel of Lights outside the community center on your evening walk or your bike ride. It's really a nice little jewel in our city. And I just want to take a moment to thank the residents of Berkeley for your continued support of our downtown businesses. It's vitally important, and I know you understand that, um, by your show of support, as a Berkeley business owner, I thank you. And, um, on behalf of other Berkeley business owners, I know that we feel it and we, we know that you're behind us and you're supporting us, and especially the restaurants. Um, I think that they need our support the most right now. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henon?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the Tree Board will next meet online on Monday, January eleventh at seven PM. Uh, the ZBA, they have no cases to hear in January, so they won't be waiting, meeting. And I just wish to, uh, want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, like my colleagues, just a quick one. Uh, Planning Commission will meet Tuesday, uh, January twenty-sixth at seven PM, but there's also a, uh, work session tomorrow at seven PM. Uh, again, you can find all the links for Zoom and everything at the, uh, on the city's calendar. And then the Environmental Advisory, uh, Committee will meet Thursday, the twenty-first at six thirty, and, uh, just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgarten?
Uh, nothing much, Mr. Mayor, just echoing, uh, council's comments, uh, wishing everyone a healthy, prosperous, uh, twenty twenty-one, and we're looking forward to better things to come.
Mr. Sterin?
And I have nothing other than to ditto the city manager's comments and greetings to everybody.
Ms. Mitchell, I know you're not on the list. I feel like we're moving rapidly. You want to throw anything in the mix?
Uh, no, sir, just echoing everyone's, um, wish for a Happy New Year.
All right, well, I will go out on a limb and say that this will be the shortest meeting of two thousand twenty-one. Um, incidentally, for those of you that don't recall, we had fifteen items on our first January meeting in two thousand twenty, so things are already looking up in twenty twenty-one. Uh, it also appears Councilmember Baker and I are thinking along similar wavelengths, uh, when we were prepping for this meeting. Most people focus on all of the changes they plan to make in a new year with resolutions about exercising, dieting, or, or trying to remove whatever vices, uh, that they may have in their lives. And while those are admirable and important, I think it's equally important to not forget, uh, the lessons that we learned in the prior year, and, and for all of its struggles, sadness and anxiety. There were some things that happened in twenty twenty that were, dare I say, points of pride, especially for our city, such as real movements and, and conversation and action towards eradicating systemic racism in our country, and outpouring of support for neighbors in need, um, or just folks who are feeling lonely. All of the, the residents, like Deb DeRosa, uh, that took it upon themselves to keep our community safe. Um, and there'll be a little bit more on that next meeting, um, and, and, you know, having masks available for folks. Most of us learned how to hide our Zoom videos and, and mute others, um, and that we can actually work remotely. Uh, I think was a, a pretty big thing that we found out in twenty twenty. And really, for our city, that "we care" motto that used to be on all of our signs has never been more apropos. And while there are many, many other things that, that we could have, or that I could have listed, as we look towards our resolutions and changes that we want to make in twenty twenty-one, let's not forget those things that helped us through the last year, because those things all matter. They've always mattered in our community, and they always will. So here's to a great twenty twenty-one, and let's remember the things that we learned in twenty twenty. With that, at seven thirty-three PM, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Or?
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes, the January fourth, two thousand twenty-one meeting of the thirty-eighth council of the city of Berkeley is adjourned.